Thanks for joining everybody and officers and just reminded we're live streaming. So welcome to anyone that is out there. We hope you're staying safe masks on when you're going outside folks. Let's be safe. Today, we're going to talk about the future of the landfill and this is in preparation for a paper that will be coming to us, I think September 9. So just to give a bit of detail and background on the officer thinking direction and you know, take your feedback as well. So Mike, can I ask you to to lead off?
Sure. Thanks, councillor Rush. Good morning, everybody. It's time for us to make a decision on the Southern landfill councillors. Our consents do expire in 2026. And now's the time for us to think about what happens after that. As councillor Rush has said, we are coming to you on the 9th of September with a asking for a steer on with a recommendation on the way ahead. And today we wanted to provide you with a fair bit of context around your thinking. So that you're ready for for the debate on the 9th. So we're going to start.
Just just one thing, Mike, can we just we'll take questions at the end of the presentation? Should we do that that way?
I think it might be a bit, there's quite a bit to get through. And the presentation ends on a climax. So maybe that's the way to do it.
Like like stairway to heaven. All right, raise your hands, folks, if you want to, and I will or text me or somehow I'll put you on the speaking list.
So we're going to start quite wide this morning and then we're going to narrow down and focus on the landfill itself. Now, whenever we talk about waste, we always we tend to kind of drift into all sorts of areas of waste. So I'm going to try and really keep us focused on the landfill itself today. Because it is time for us to actually start making a specific, a specific decision. Now, just by way of background, we know that we're not currently the leader in waste minimisation and management in New Zealand. And we know that that is not how we like to see ourselves here in one. We want to be an eco-city. So we know that the government's looking at this and is looking at a series of regulations and levies, but progress on that is quite slow. We're looking into it too. We currently have a strategic review underway with consultants from RDC and SLR. Who are currently producing some work for us that is going to be culminate in a roadmap of the way forward for waste in Wellington. We're bringing that to you to the infrastructure committee in October. So that is the blueprint that we're going to bring to you in October. And it is more focused on waste minimisation than we currently are. Now, that piece of work isn't finished yet. But this decision on the landfill, can't wait for that to be concluded. Unfortunately, strategy is necessarily messy sometimes. So we're going to need to make a call on the landfill before that roadmap is complete. But we have enough of a sense of where the roadmap is for me to give you the favour of that this morning. So that it can be useful context for you when we talk about the future of the landfill. So at a very high level, we already have some draft outcomes from the review and I'll go through those in a moment. We've intentionally separated the discussion of the roadmap from the Southern landfill. Because waste in Wellington isn't just about the landfill. What waste in Wellington is a much, much bigger picture. It's much more complex. But what we tend to do, because we have a landfill, is we tend to focus on the landfill. Is the be all and end all. It is actually not. So we're trying to be quite disciplined in our thinking about the future of the landfill. So just with respect to the strategic waste review, this is the draft vision and objectives that that we're working on at the moment. It's more about leadership, adoption of te ao māori and some of our thinking and our objectives. This is not concluded yet. We'll bring this to you in October, as I say. We did get some feedback from some external stakeholders last week who told us it was good, but a bit boring. So we've got some useful feedback in terms of where we might be taking this. But this is kind of a guts of and gives you a sense of what we are thinking with respect to the strategic waste review that is coming to you in October. It's just to drill down on a wee bit, we do have five focus areas that we're looking at in the strategic waste review. We're working this up in more detail and we'll bring this to you with the other material in in October. I have to say, one of the key aspects and challenges is going to be funding. At the moment, of course, we pay for waste minimisation activities like recycling from money we make at the landfill. So as we start to spread our wings and become more aspirational with respect to waste minimisation. We're really keen that we talk about investment and don't forget about funding as we go. So I am going to pass over to Emily. At this point, Emily is going to take you through our thinking so far, some of the options that we have and I'll conclude, we'll jump up in a couple of points with strategic points, a couple of places with strategic points and and some funding stuff. But Emily, if I can hand over you now to take us through the the ins and outs of the options that we have been looking at. At this point, can I just say that we have engaged an external consultant, Becker, who have been helping us to do an analysis on how we might deal with residual waste in Wellington post 2026. And what Emily is going to talk to you about is based on the analysis that Becker has produced for us. So Emily, over to you, please.
Thanks, Mike. Kia ora councillors. So just to kind of look at the third point that Mike showed on the draft roadmap. The point is of remaining way the most sustainable way. So councillors asked officers in June to report back on the implications of not having a landfill. So the next two slides are just going to talk at a high level about that. Essentially, this means looking at two core options. The first is don't have a residual waste disposal in Wellington, i.e. close the landfill and don't replace it with anything. So the councils identified the Southern landfill as a strategic asset within the community. In addition to providing a facility dispose of residual waste, both residential and commercial. It generates revenue for council of approximately $16 million. That's per year. The majority of this revenue is obviously used to fund our waste minimisation initiatives, which is predominantly the provision of curbside recycling in Wellington. Whilst the decision to close the landfill would result in a significant reduction of local environment effects. So traffic noise and odour and would also signal a bold statement of intent from council. It in itself wouldn't necessarily reduce the city's waste. So residual waste would likely to be, would likely need to be disposed of somewhere else. And realistically, this will involve the transportation of waste to other landfills within the Wellington region. I guess the positive side of that, that council could respond to the landfill closure by opting to significantly intensify efforts to minimize waste and maximize waste diversion across the city. So I guess like hooking into the roadmap that we're in the process of developing, really allocate a significant portion of funding to increase the diversion and minimisation of waste so that if we're exporting waste or transporting waste to somewhere else across the city that that we're reducing the amount that we need to do. Obviously, the decision to close the Southern landfill would nonetheless impact on budget implications and financial implications for the council and for rate payers. So it potentially would look to increase the cost of waste collection and disposal for residents. Because we'd need to put in the transportation of that waste somewhere else into that waste collection. I guess at a high level, preliminary estimates suggests that maintaining our current level of activity. So the same service level for recycling and providing the same level of resourcing that we currently have supporting our waste minimisation initiatives. That would kind of look at around about a 2.5% rates increase that would have to cover from the loss of the landfill revenue. Assuming we change no service levels. Obviously, if we're looking to increase the scope and intensity of our existing waste minimisation initiatives. We need an additional funded commitment by the council on top of that 8.4 million per annum. Next slide, please, Mike. The other option in terms of having a landfill or not having a landfill is obviously keeping waste disposal facility in the in the city. So there's obviously intense community interest in the future of the Southern landfill. Many of our local community members object to the environmental impacts of the landfill. And then from a wider community perspective, there's a perception that the landfill is incongruent with the strategic vision for the city to be an eco-city. However, from the positive side of keeping a waste disposal facility, we retain the strategic assets which would in turn with its revenue help to keep rates down. And that's obviously via the utilisation of the landfill revenue. As I've mentioned, the closure of the landfill would have financial implications for both our current BAU waste minimisation activities and initiatives. And obviously, in terms of keeping the landfill, we would be able to maintain that level of funding. Whilst closure of a landfill might send a strong signal to the community, it obviously doesn't in itself reduce waste. So if we keep a waste disposal facility for 2026, we're obviously continuing to be accountable for our own waste and can ensure that really residential waste disposal is done so in an environmentally responsible manner. E.g., we can continue to offer free waste disposal diversion, I guess, free waste diversion for hazardous waste. Mandatory requirements under our BYL law for green waste diversion, the landfill and obviously diversion of e-waste away from the landfill. So I guess at a high level, there's a couple of ways of cutting it. We can either look to reconcent the landfill. Or we can consult on a range of options for alternative disposal technologies alongside a reconcent landfill.
So next month, sorry, yes, next month, it is our intention to come to you recommending that we commence formal consultation on residual waste disposal options. You know, we would love not to have a landfill in Wellington. We'd regret if we didn't need it. But the truth is, it's not simple. And it's not just a matter of switching it off, as Emily's just said. So looked at a bunch of alternatives here in Wellington and we worked with Becker, as I said before, to develop a list of options. We looked at 14 different waste management technologies, including the landfill, and we settled on a shortlist of four. And what we did was we took those four and we assessed them against some go and no-go criteria. They had to be delivered before the end of 2026. They had to be a proven technology and they had to be scalable. One of the challenges we have is that if we want to reduce waste, we can't be building a factory that needs waste to be fed into it to make it work. So whatever we do, we need to make sure that it's scalable. So those were the three go-no-go criteria that we put the four technologies past, three technologies plus the landfill. And then we we put them against these more detailed assessment criteria once they've passed the go-no-go tests. So we've done quite a thorough analysis and what I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask Emily to talk you through the ins and outs of some of the technologies that we looked at and then I'll conclude with just some high-level conclusions as to what those look like from the most strategic level and the way forward.
Cool, thanks. And sorry, just to clarify, the criteria that Mike just demonstrated on the previous two slides, that was run across all 14 options to kind of narrow it down to to four. So I am just going to walk you through the four options. I'll give you a really high-level summary of what each of those options are. And then I will, there'll be a slide that will kind of tell you the positives and negatives of each of those options. So this picture here is an energy from waste or a waste energy. Around the world, there's a shift away from landfilling and in Europe, US and the US and Asia, there's a shift towards more high-tech waste disposal facilities such as energy from waste. So this method uses, essentially burns the waste and uses the heat generated to produce electricity and possibly heat. The output is an ash, which is significantly reduced in mass and volume compared to the input waste. And some of that ash can be used as building material. The hot flue gases, which are obviously coming out of the chimney type things, produced from the combustion of waste, are passed through a boiler which superheats steam to a high pressure, which then drives it drives a turbine turbine to generate electricity. And then the gases from the flue are treated to remove any pollutants before they're admitted to the atmosphere. And that's your very high-level basic 101 waste synergy. There's some positives around that. Obviously, if Wellington City would look to look for a waste energy plant, would be obviously seen as a leader. And we would continue to be accountable for our waste and we keep control of those waste streams. And sorry, on the side, it says council ownership of the landfill can ensure fair prices for disposal. That should say council ownership of the asset would ensure that we can keep a control on prices. And it would also kind of consider like our staff, which we would expect to be involved in that. The negatives around waste energy, it's obviously untested in New Zealand, both for consenting and operational effectiveness. And they tend to be reasonably mega-scale. So you, and it's a case of once you build it, you have to feed it. So in order for it to be efficient and effective, you need a certain amount of input waste that would be required to keep it running. So it tends to discourage waste minimisation because you're trying to push as much through as possible. And particularly with plastics, I think a fair amount of plastics is put through waste synergy plants overseas. Cost, obviously, it's reasonably big scale. And it doesn't resolve all the environmental effects within the local area. Because we still need to look at outputs, I guess, volume of traffic to the to the facility as well as the sort of air outputs. It's unlikely to stack up if we remove sludge to the point facility. And I guess just noting it can't accept contaminated soil, which we receive a reasonable amount of at the Southern landfill. And 30% of what goes in still needs to be landfilled. This is a material recycling facility or a MRF. So essentially, for those of you who have been out to the OG recycling sorting plant, it's a bit like that, but on steroids, really. It's taking all waste materials. So what would get collected at curbside in our rubbish bags or if people have private welly bins and goes to a sorting facility, which would then sort out those those different waste materials into different streams of recyclable materials. So typically, your household waste would be sorted into metals, glass, paper, card and plastics, which would then be sent off to be recycled in another facility. And the leftover non-recyclable material would then be sent to a landfill or an energy from waste. From a positives and negatives, obviously, it reduces the amount of landfill. It's more in line with a circular economy in terms of that we're pulling more materials out of the waste stream to be recycled. It has got, it obviously has carbon liability benefits because we're reducing the amount of waste. And and I guess if council owns the landfill that accepts the residual waste, obviously, the filling rate would be greatly reduced in extending the life of the landfill. From a negative perspective, it's obviously got more manual handling and higher health and safety operational risks. It, and this is sort of a positive in that it reduces the need for separation at source, but it also reduces an opportunity to talk about behavioural change with our residents. There's a lack of New Zealand market maturity for some of the recycled materials from the facility. And we see that anyway with our curbside recycling. And typically, things that have been through this kind of facility, which is often referred to as a dirty MRF. Usually not as clean a stream as we would see from our curbside recycling and therefore might be more difficult to shift in the market because they would contain an element, more of an element of contamination than just a straight recycling collection. Obviously, it's high initial investment costs and higher ongoing costs. And I guess worth noting that actually a MRF of this sort, still, we would expect 50 to 70% of the input materials that would still need to go to a landfill and contaminated soil and asbestos isn't something that can go through this type of facility. This is a picture of a mechanical biological treatment. So it's really similar to a material recycling facility, but it's got an added step of a biological treatment such as bio-drying, composting or anaerobic digestion. So this this kind of facility is probably more common if you've got, if the input material has a high organic content. So in terms of the bio-drying, waste is typically put into piles which have a controlled airflow which decomposes the waste and heats it in the process, which obviously removes the moisture content and produces a more homogeneous output. And then that material can then be go on to be sorted as if you would say in a MRF. So essentially, you heat it, dry it, and then you pull out the paper, cardboard, metal, that kind of thing. From a positive and negative perspective, obviously, it's a better ability to capture carbon from the degradation of organic material because you're heating and drying it within the facility as opposed to emissions to atmosphere, reduces the amount of landfill and therefore, and then more in line with a circular economy because we're pulling out those recyclable materials and the energy produced from the biological or the bio-drying can be captured and reused. Negative, obviously, it's not being consented in New Zealand and we're not, and the risk of technology are unknown in a New Zealand context as well. The organic material is unlikely to be able to be reused due to the contamination from the other materials that have been processed with it. And actually, in New Zealand, there's a real lack of market maturity for the uptake of recycled materials from this facility. For the same reason that we'd see in a dirty MRF, they're just being mixed in with general waste. And then obviously increase the risk of getting contamination as they go through that collection process. It's got high initial costs and ongoing costs and outputs need to go to a landfill are around about 50%. And again, it can't take contaminated soil or asbestos. So landfill, I don't think I need to tell you how that works, but just in terms of the option that we're looking at as part of the consultation process, you'll all be familiar with the stage four design that we were working on about 18 months ago. We've took the feedback from the engagement we did with key stakeholders in 2019 and 2020 and considered a range of other possible options for a landfill on the same site. But looking to minimise the environmental impacts in terms of native regenerating vegetation and associated native species such as birds from Zelandia and obviously the Kairi's Gully Stream. So the area that is circled and read, we've determined that that area is actually known as stage two. We've identified that that would be suitable for a smaller landfill. That would give us approximately 15 to 20 years based on current waste rates and waste volumes and would have a lesser environmental impact. There's much less we have to do in terms of prepping the site for being able to put a landfill. So we're calling this option a piggyback option because we're essentially piggybacking off the back of what's an already closed landfill. So I guess the positives are all the sort of positives that come with a landfill. We can accept all types of waste streams. We can, it's flexible in terms of being able to manage, reduce waste volumes as we kind of gear up our waste minimisation and diversion initiatives. We wouldn't need to reclaim the stream and there'd be minimal vegetation removal. And we're obviously much further away from the Zelandia border than what the original design was. And actually, from the current operating landfill, council obviously would remain taking responsibility for the waste that they produce and keeps control of the waste streams, both from a strategic perspective and also during an emergency. And obviously, we retain that, those revenue opportunities to be able to subsidise our waste minimisation initiatives. The negatives of the solution is obviously that the Kairi's Gully Stream would continue to be piped. So for those of you that aren't aware, the stream under the current operating landfill and and actually stage two and stage one runs through a big tunnel, a big pipe. So that it's protected from the landfill above it. The original stage four option looks to be able to divert the stream from higher up the gully and that would look to kind of daylight the, or take out of the tunnel, the piece of the stream that is currently going through the through the tunnel. Under this option, the stream would remain within the tunnel. I guess there's no change to local community concerns. So we still have the traffic and odour and impact on the local community. I guess what's really important to note around this piggyback option is that that stage two area is currently where we do our Windrow composting operations. And I know has kind of been looked at to consider future waste diversion activities, for example, like a resource recovery park. If we're landfilling in this space, obviously, we would need to find a we would need to find, I guess, new homes or new sites to be able to carry out those activities. And obviously, a landfill is always complicated from a carbon capture perspective.
Thanks, Emily. Councillor Rush, this is the guitar solo at the end of Stairway to Heaven. This is kind of pulling together those four options. And can I just draw your attention to the Capex in Opex in particular? I think it's just worthwhile being realistic about what these things cost before we start. We haven't brought this to you during the LTP, so there are some obvious things, some obvious challenges for us that we would need to synchronise with our planning if we were going to go ahead with anything other than than the landfill option. What I need to say too is that with respect to energy from waste, materials, recycling facility and mechanical biological treatment. All of those options still require us to dispose of waste in a landfill somewhere. It may not be the Southern landfill, but we still have to take waste to a landfill somewhere. There aren't any of these consented in New Zealand at this point and none of them are proven in New Zealand. So there's a fair element of risk with the top three. I think it's worth just considering that when we bring you the advice next week. So I mentioned that we still require to dispose of waste in the landfill with those options, other than the landfill option, of course, which is 100%. We haven't settled on a preferred option. It's our intention to come to you next week seeking your approval to consult on those options. Councillor Rush, I guess that's what we wanted to share formally at this point and are happy to take questions or discussion. I think, I think you can see that no matter how you cut it, as it stands, landfill feels like the most technically feasible and financially flexible options. But if councillors were of the minds to not have a landfill or a waste waste disposal facility in the city, that could be consulted during the during the annual plan if you want. if you wanted not to have the facility. But I'll stop the screen during now and happy to take any questions. Shaun, are you going to share this bit?
Yeah, yeah, thanks Mike. So I've got questions from Jill and Iona. Sorry, I wasn't sure which was the order. So you've just come up order as per my screen, Jill on the left, Iona in the middle. So and I've got I've got a couple of questions, but I can wait. So Jill?
Me too, please.
Oh, Kilda. It's me, Jill. Oh, Terry said she wants to go on the list. Put my hand down. So thank you for that. I guess my first question is, if we chose not to have a landfill in Wellington, where would we be sending our rubbish, which we will have to send? I'm just aware of how that will be received by maybe the rest of the region. Where would we be sending it?
So it's likely we would send it either to Porirua, so Spisalandfall, or Silverstream, or quite possibly further beyond. So Bonnie Glen is up round Martin. That's also a potential.
So the view from the community could be that we're just going, oh, we'll send our rubbish somewhere else. We won't deal with it here, I guess. The question, I had a couple of questions about the specific facilities. So the materials recycling facility, would there be issues? Because at the moment, we have issues with recycling being contaminated. Could it manage contaminated recycling? Would we still be in the same situation where people would be reliant on people washing their recycling?
Yeah, I think so. Yes, I mean, it would depend if you made a decision to continue curbside recycling collections as a separate collection. And I think that's by and large, although we do have some issues with contamination, that's by and large quite a clean stream that's very easy to shift. In terms of what goes through a merf, bear in mind, it's been mixed through with other general waste. So whilst in itself it might be washed and cleaned by the time it's sort of tumbled around in a truck with other waste streams, and particularly if you've got food waste or nappies or anything else that kind of goes through there, you're potentially seeing what might have been a clean product going in come out as, I guess, more dirty. And that makes it a lesser product, which will be more difficult to shift.
And so with all these options too, the biggest challenge seems to us that in New Zealand, we don't have a a market for recycled materials. Is this something that we as a council could do anything about? Obviously, we have a fund which helps people to explore and experiment with technology. Is there a possibility to be able to really put energy into upscaling that?
Yeah, councillor, my view is this is the uncomfortable connection we have between council processes and the private sector. So really, really, we need the private sector to be investing in those technologies and that industry that we feed with our recycling. So I think in terms of what the council could do, we're quite limited. And I think we really would need to look for the private sector partners to be able to build that capacity and to actually industrialize. Our basic problem is we're not industrialized enough to deal with most of this waste.
So maybe if we were doing more and not producing more, but having more come through in an organized fashion and other councils started doing that, it might create a better market, would it?
I think that's really important not to just look at the at the end of the life of these products. I think it's really important to look at how we design these products. So for example, if all the plastic we had in our supermarkets were able to go to flight plastics to be recycled, there'll be a wonderful outcome, but our ability to do that as a city council is very is very limited. And we need the government to step up with some regulation, which they're looking at, to be fair. So I think one of the things we're really keen to avoid is just focusing at the end of life of waste instead of looking at people changing their behavior so we don't have so much waste in the first place. That's one of the disadvantages of looking at it from a disposal point of view. We're not looking at it from the top of the pipe, we're just looking at the bottom of the pipe.
Is the government giving us any, it's my last question, is the government giving us any indication of what they are thinking that could help us make the right decisions to fit in with that?
Yes, there are some big things and some small things. So the emissions trading scheme, the price of carbon and along with the waste disposal levy, so every tonne of waste that we dispose of in the landfill, currently, the government takes a ten percent levy, they're looking at increasing that to sixty percent and to broadening the cover of that levy. So if you take that that increased cost of another fifty bucks a tonne along with the price of carbon, which I think is now about forty bucks a tonne and expected to go to fifty.
It's currently at fifty.
Fifty.
At fifty, is it? Okay. So the cost of disposing waste, if you add those two taxes on, is a hundred bucks a tonne more than it was a couple of years ago. So the more those prices go up, the more other, the more industry is encouraged to do alternative things than landfilling. So there's some of the big stuff that the government is doing. At a more kind of granular level, they are looking at product stewardship whereby producers or generators of waste have to be responsible for taking it back at the end of its life. BMW is a really good example of where they do this with cars in Europe. So why can't it be that the people that design beer bottles or other containers are also responsible for the stewardship of that product? So that's a slightly more technical thing that the government is looking at doing and has on its books or on its regulatory books to, I think, bring it over the next couple of years, although to be honest, it's been drifting for a little while, but it's definitely on the government's books.
Thank you.
Councillor Hannah?
Thank you, Mike and Emily. Appreciate this. So obviously, as you know, I'm looking for a major step change in the waste area, not just to do status quo. So a few questions. Have you done any analysis of the cost of continuing with the status quo? So in terms of continued increases in ETS costs, reputational issues, increased cost of goods, that sort of thing?
So the work that Baker's done for us does look at those, the actual costs of of landfilling is very much the baseline or the benchmark that we've used against which to compare those other those other costs. What we haven't done, councillor, is look at the cost of reputation. And we're very much looked at at the cost of the landfill itself as opposed to some of those softer softer costs that you're talking about.
Yeah, and just it would help me if this could be seen in the context of the declaration of the climate and ecological emergency when the paper comes back. So the next question I've got is, how are we able to utilize the opportunities that the government may enable us to to make that step change? So is there a plan to apply for money from MFE, say to do some resource recovery? What will we do with the levy? Container deposit legislation will help too in terms of reducing waste. So how are we sort of leaning into all those opportunities in terms of the planning?
So there are multiple opportunities. First is the way the levy works is half the money actually comes back to council. So we use that money already for our own waste fund and for funding some waste minimization activities. We expect that number to increase as the government increases the levy. We, if they keep the same model, where money comes back to us, we will have additional revenue to spend. But I have to be realistic with you, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars or perhaps a couple of million. It is not, it is not going to give us a step change. The other comment I would make is the government does also have the contestable fund, which is the other half of the revenue that they keep. That fund is currently quite difficult for councils to access and quite problematic in terms of measuring the outcomes. I think one of the things we need to think about is talking with the government about about how that is structured because there are sixty, sixty, seventy A's in New Zealand and all of us are doing our own thing and waste doesn't respect the TA boundary. So I think there's definitely a need for us to kind of think more more regionally about waste and about these facilities. Some of the facilities that Emily's described might be very attractive, but our ability to actually A, have enough waste and B, to afford those, those is greatly diminished in the city of our size.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess that would be one of the opportunities that we, I would envisage that we would do something regionally or even going up the island as well. I mean, that just makes sense. So just last question for now. You know, we've had lots of conversations about waste. So can I just clarify, is it still staff advice that we really do continue mostly with the status quo? Because I'm still not seeing how recommending a landfill is going to get us to the vision that's been stated in the in the draft review anyway.
So the roadmap we're bringing into October, we have thirty year roadmap. I think it's quite aspirational and does, we have specifically attempted to address the step times that many councillors were after, but it's going to take some time. So Emily was talking about a fifteen to twenty year timeframe for the landfill. I think that buys us time to do something different and perhaps to get our act together on a regional or multi-regional basis. But these things will take time and time and money.
Yeah, I get that, but we have made a commitment to reduce our emissions significantly by twenty thirty. So I guess, is there some urgency? Also, that's what I'm looking for clarification on.
Of course, of course, but no matter what we do, if we take out organics in five years, for example, and if there's not a shred of organic waste going into the landfill, if we're doing something really clever with it, we will still need to dispose of waste somewhere. So I guess what I'm signaling is I think a smart thing for us to do would be to acknowledge that the era of the landfill is coming towards the end and that the councillors now are looking at other ways of of disposing of waste. But we can't switch everything off in the next ten years.
Councillor Foon?
Kilda, thank you. Mike, I think just looking at this, what I'm really, I've got some concerns about is that the the timing and the process because we've signaled, we've got our strategic waste review with a thirty year roadmap to to waste reduction. And that's what the community really wants to know about. And I'm worried that if we go out for consultation on what we do with the residue waste ahead of consulting with the community on on what we want to do as a as a city to move forward on zero waste, we're going to get, yeah, that's going to be out of sorts. So the question is, is there a criticality around timing for a few months? Or is there a way we can do the consultation in tandem? I either zero waste strategy alongside and then what do we do with the residue, Jill?
It's a really good point, councillor. I think the key thing will be how we tell the story. And today, we've been talking about the landfill almost divorced and waste minimization. But I think unfortunately, you're right, the strategy is a little bit untidy in terms of the sequencing. But we are running out of time if we're going to have a waste disposal facility. So what we're proposing is that when we consult, we tell the story about the journey that we're on. And just let me wax lyrical for a little bit. That in thirty years' time, we see a Wellington where there is no landfill and where products are specified to be either low, low waste or recyclable before they even come into the city or into the country. And in ten, twenty, ten, fifteen years' time, we want to have an organics collection in home composting scheme in place so that the risk of that is diminished. But in the meantime, we still have to have this damn landfill that takes care of the issue we have right now while we're on this journey. So that's the kind of nature of the story that we want to tell. And the landfill is an unnecessary, sorry, is unfortunate evil that we have to have because I simply, a landfill is an unfortunate evil that we have to have while we go through this journey. Now, I think it's really important that we talk about the landfill in the context of where we want to go and where we're heading and what our aspirations are, councillor.
Can I just ask another couple of questions? Ken, just for if we get this out there, that carbon impacts be alongside each of those options? And also a question about the stream health management. I think that will be critical for the community to understand what what we're doing about that and actually that has got to be a major part of what each option impacts alongside that as well?
Yes.
Okay, and I just also would recommend that a zero waste option, that you know, like a zero landfill do be part, is part of the consultation?
So no landfill is one of the options, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think people need to learn about that and understand. And I think it would help reflect that if we get to apply, yeah, I think it would be important to have that conversation.
Sure, councillor. So just on the moe of that stream, we're under no illusions as to the significance of that, both from Mano Fenway and from Boos, our friends of Ophiro's stream and others, of course. So the community has left us no doubt as to the view of the importance of the stream and its health.
Thanks Laurie. Terry, sorry, I skipped you out. So then Andy, then Flora.
All good. Thank you. My first question is around the merf on steroids. Do we have a number about the the costing for that? Or what kind of cost benefit options have we looked into for the for the paper coming forward?
So I'm just letting you down to the slide. So the the merf, the estimate was forty three million capex and about twenty, twenty six million Opex. Bearing in mind, councillor, with that, we still have quite a high proportion of waste that still needs to be landfilled.
Yep. And then my second question, obviously, understanding that with kind of the the two streams aren't parallel and that there is a lot of ecological harm and conflict here with the landfill continuing as it's going. When do you think we'll be able to quantify or qualify sort of the the cost of ecological harm with a potential future around the landfill? And have we thought about maybe some of the benefits or the revenue losses that we would have closing the landfill, maybe being generated through other means by making it a a part of our town belt or our national parks or maybe doing some carbon plumbing and even pine planting back over the landfill with natives can't survive? Have we thought about sort of those revenue opportunities there?
Not in any great detail at this stage, councillor. My gut feeling is that in terms of the numbers that we're talking about, that I think there's a struggle to get them kind of close to where we are at the moment. I think the number Emily put up was eight point four million a year. So my guts is telling me that it will be difficult to get to a number of that quantity, but we can certainly give that some thought.
Or take, for example, the continued costs of piping a really significant stream and perhaps if, you know, we might be able to do some more remedial natural regeneration in support of that stream and save us more ecological costs in the future. How kind of that's weighed up or maybe the future of Zelandia, if that is the a concern that we've heard from Paul and the chief executive over there and the board in that area. So I'm just keen to understand if we're taking such a future focused, maybe, you know, the opportunities of the site are being considered within the paper as well.
Yeah, sure. So just a couple of things on that, councillor. So the red circle that Emily popped up that showed that the hot print, that one of the advantages of that, it actually doesn't take us any closer to Zelandia than we already are. In fact, we've moved us back a little bit, I think, Emily. So that is one of the benefits of of the piggybacking landfill option. So when we talk about landfilling now, we're just talking about the piggyback option. That is all we are talking about. And actually, I think we have done some analysis around managing that water so that we can take it around. We can turn the string back into a more natural, we're going to be the natural form. But it's actually very expensive. I think fifteen million, I think, is in my mind. Emily, so we have actually, I can confirm that we have actually looked at diverting the stream around the top of the landfill. But the management of water and securing its moe is one of the most expensive and contentious parts of managing the scully.
Can I, if I can just?
Is that more expensive than continuing to pipe than doing all these tests and having to go back?
Sorry, can I just clarify on the stream option? Like when we were looking at, I guess, re-diverting the stream from the headwaters, we were looking at that under the plan to go with the original stage four landfill. And that in itself, unfortunately, is is what we would look at in terms of being able to enable us to divert the stream. You kind of need to fill the gully so you can encourage the stream to go round, to go round the sides. Otherwise, water just naturally will drop to the top. So I don't, we haven't looked at it, but I think, and certainly from my team's perspective and what we've looked at, the only way to take the stream out of the tunnel is if you're diverting those at the headwaters. And the best way to do that is to fill the gully up. So whether you do that with waste or whether you do that with dirt or something else, you still need to fill the gully to be able to divert the stream. So if we're looking at a piggyback option as the option preferred and the landfilling preferred options, not preferred options across all four options or five options, if we're looking at no landfill as an option, then there isn't currently technically a way to take the stream out of the tunnel. It was just something where the tunnel will have to be maintained and make sure that it's still functioning and that it's checking. Because if the tunnel breaks, we potentially create a dam at the top end of the gully. So there's ongoing maintenance costs with the piggyback option and we can't remove the stream from the tunnel.
Cool. Okay, so I've got Andy, Flair and Sarah, and we've got about eight minutes left. So go for it, Andy.
Thanks. I suspect if we're going to start diverting, if we're going to start diverting streams, there'll be a few other candidates for streams to come out of landfills as well. But I don't know how you do that because you've got, you've got to get the water up higher. And the question I've got is just the link between, it's almost the counterfactual. If we don't have any landfilling capacity here, clearly all three of the other technological based options you've said require a certain amount of landfilling. It's the counterfactual of where they go and the cost to the community and the emissions of moving them from wherever they are being generated, which will be across Wellington City to higher weather, it's Porirua, whether it's Spices, whether it's Silverstream or further afield. What does that counterfactual look like? And then I'm also interested in the conversation that Laurie was having with you about trying to join all these things together. So we've got one joined up conversation. And the other bit is just to put on the table, there's been some discussion at a whole of local government level about a number of different areas where there might be some things which parts of the country could do really well better than, you know. So we agglomerate things. One of those was about waste reprocessing. The thought was that it might be in the Auckland Waikato area. The other thought might be that we might be able to join up something between us and the Manawa Two Hawks Bay area. So that would be part of that counterfactual too, of the stuff that doesn't need to go to landfill. And I respect that there are some things which at the moment probably is not much option.
Yes, you wish. I don't think there's any doubt that we have to stop thinking about waste in our own little pictures and agglomeration. If we're going to make a step change, it clearly needs to be agglomeration, given the scale of investment that's required. In terms of the counterfactual, if waste has to go elsewhere, we can certainly have a look at that and make sure we reference that in the advice to you next week.
Thank you.
Hi, Flair.
Thanks. And a good demonstration of these being live streamed and Laurie letting the community in Ophiru Bay know. I just have a couple of questions directly from the president of the Ophiru Bay Residents Association, actually. And it's just to do with that second to last slide around the costs of other options. It's got, I think, three different options listed. And the question is really whether there will be a benefits realisation exercise done of those options. It kind of follows on from Terry's question. And will that be done either in the paper or outlined or is that something that would come later?
And then Paul had a very high level outline of the benefits and disbenefits. It won't be an analysis to the effect that you're asking councillor, it'll just be an indication.
And is the reason for that, yeah, what's the reason for that?
Well, before we go to that level of analysis, it's really important to get an understanding of where we're going. And I think we'll do due diligence at the point where we understand where we are going, rather than doing a whole bunch of analysis on four of the options at this stage.
Hi, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Obviously lots of work done. I was just interested in the fact, Mike, that you said you're not going to be making a recommendation. And can you elaborate on that? Because normally officers would, wouldn't they?
So we're not making a recommendation on a preferred option, we're making a recommendation on consulting. So we're asking you for your, we're asking you to agree that we will go and consult in October. That is what will be the rec in the paper.
Okay, but I understood that the normal process for, you know, under the local government actors, we do have a recommended preferred option?
Yeah, but we don't want to get wrapped up and jumping into a conclusion before we have actually consulted with the community. So we're just playing it very carefully with respect to decision making and not leaping the decision to a solution before we have done our contract.
And I guess my other thought was, has any work been done on the actual transport requirements? If we don't have the tip where it is, the landfill where it is now, and we're asking for rubbish to actually be transported elsewhere, how much thinking's been done around that?
Yeah, okay, but it's quite difficult because we don't actually control the transport. So if, for example, we were to close Southern and everyone decided to go to Spicer in Porirua or the Silverstream landfill in the hut, we don't actually control the transport companies that actually take them there. So the best we could do would be a high level analysis of what we think would happen. But we don't actually know for sure what that would look like.
And my last question would be, would there be any public health risks of actually closing down the landfill? Like unexpected consequences in terms of public health? Because people have less options or more difficult options.
I think whenever we take a decision like this, I think that it is normal to see a spike in flight tipping, so illegal dumping. That typically lasts for three to six months and then, once people get used to the change, it tails off. So whether or not that's a health risk, I guess it is. That's pretty normal. But other than that, I don't think so, councillor.
I guess if I can just jump in as well, we don't actually, you know, like Mike says, we don't control the waste in terms of where those collectors take the waste. So, you know, we're aware that some waste companies go to already collecting and certainly in the northern suburbs of Wellington City go to Spicer landfill. And waste companies typically will also pick where the cheapest landfill is to dispose of anyway. So we already know there's sort of waste movement across the city anyway. And it might not necessarily translate directly into additional costs for residents, but it would depend.
Okay, so we've got 30 seconds Laurie, do you reckon you can belt it out quick? One more question? Or do you want to take it offline with Mike separately?
Yeah, I think Emily just asked it really. I think I just wanted to make clear that while we talk about Wellington City Council having responsibility for our waste, we don't really control what, where it comes from.
Hmm, nice. All right, folks. Well, thanks very much, Mike and officers. We look forward to hearing and seeing that paper September 9th. And anyone that's listening, hopefully we'll be back at the council chambers on the terrace. But in the meantime, stay